I call the May the 30th, 2012. Special meeting, work session of the Frankford Board of Commissioners to order. Would you please call the roll?
Richard Wilder.
Here.
Richard Hiddon.
Here.
Richard Turner.
Here.
Mr. May.
Here.
Mayor Grant. Here. All present, count them for us, and thank you. You are here today. We have one item for the agenda on that's discussion of the general fund budget for next year. So we have citizen comments that can be addressed. Take one, okay? Raise your... Okay, whichever one to come forth here. Identify yourself, you know, for the record.
How y'all doing? Appreciate you all giving us a chance to speak. My name's Travis Kurtzinger, an employee of the city. I'd like to discuss with you all the proposed cuts...
Did you give your name?
Travis Kurtzinger.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd like to discuss with you all the proposed cuts to the employee benefits. Some understanding from proposed, the city will force working spouses of employees with available insurance to leave the city health insurance plan at projected savings of $100,000 for the 212 under the 13 budget. My first question is where this figure for the savings coming from? Was the number of spouses that are projected to be cut from the healthcare and the savings per individual for being removed from the policy? Has anyone in this process considered the impact to the employees by these changes? I can only speak for myself when I express my concerns about the individual impact to my family. I would see a potential cost to my family of more than $4,400 a year. Comes from $2,400 placed into a 457 account by my spouse's employer, plus an increase of $2,000 out of pocket and deductible that I'd be responsible for by adding a second insurance policy for my family. Many employees have flex spending accounts. Their spouses have flex spending money put in by their employer. If you take that out, that's money that those families are relying on to pay their out-of-pocket insurance expenses. Got a family that's got a $2,000 flex spending and we can take that away come January 1st, that's a significant impact to a family on top of meeting a second deductible. It seems like we're willing to overlook the cost to the employees in order to create a pretty small savings for the city when you compare the amount of the budget overall. And it seems like this year, as in every year, we brace for what's going to be cut from our benefits. We've seen longevity cut from 31, health insurance costs have gone up, benefits we receive have decreased, we're working with older equipment, smaller budgets, and we've seen an increased workload due to cuts in staffing. These... My understanding from last meeting approximately $300,000 has been accounted for in this budget on top of the last year's budget. $62,000 for a garbage compliance officer, $200,000 for the garbage lease, $44,588 for the sustainability coordinator. These are promised returns in the future, but they're costing us now. Why not use some of the $8 million in the budget or in the supplement or surplus to supplement the budget until we start seeing returns on these investments that were promised? Once our benefits are taken away, even if we see returns, it's unlikely that our benefits are going to be reinstated. And there comes a point where I believe that these costs have got to be shifted over to the tax base instead of the employees. We should not be forced to accommodate these cuts year after year after year. And I refer to a comment made by Commissioner Wilder on the last one, last meeting, and I think it's pretty clear that staff just wants us to raise taxes so they can spend as much money as they want, pretty cut and dry. I'd like to point out, according to from the last meeting, 1.75 is the occupational tax for Frankford, which has been in place for 10 years. If you go to the Kentucky Occupational License Association, get comparable cities in size of Frankford what their occupational tax rates are. I'll give you a few of them. Owensboro, 133. Bowling Green, 185. Covington, 2 and 1/2. Hopkinsville, 195. Henderson, 1. Paducah, 2. Lawrence, 2. Richmond, 2. Radcliffe, 2. Maysville, 195. Madisonville, 1 and 1/2. Berea, 2. Middlesbrough, 2. Midway, 2. Nicholasville, 1 and 1/2. Newport, 2 and 1/2. Wilder, 2 and 1/4. Wilmore, 2. Winchester, 2. So the point is, we don't have an unreasonable occupational tax. According to the 1112 budget, I didn't have a copy of the current budget to look at, we raised $15,720,000 at 1.75%. If we increase that by .15% to 1.9%, we generate $1,000 or $1,347,000 a year. Understanding January is when that will take effect, so we'd only see half of that for this budget, but then we'd just see 1.3 increase, if not more, the following year. That would generate more revenue for the city, and as the workforce and the economy recovers, we should see benefits of more than the 1.3 million. This is why we keep competitive with comparable cities of Frankford at a 1.9% instead of 2% occupational tax that is common with a lot of cities comparable to Frankford. So when we're sitting and doing all this, I was looking at, thinking of how we're running the city. We're running it as a business, I assume. Water bill, cable bill, sewer, phone, all those businesses I deal with, when they go up, I pay the increase. So the government seems to be, the city government seems to be the only business that I deal with, to where when the increased costs go up, they're passed on to the people that are providing the service instead of those receiving the service. So that's why I think it makes sense to balance it when you've got a workforce of 300,000 with the assistance of 300, or 30,000, I'm sorry. You've got a workforce of 30,000 people, balance it with 30,000 people instead of 300 employees. All right, I'll try to move along here.
Please do.
So, okay. So basically, I don't agree with cutting the spouses. I think it's a significant impact to families. I don't think that it's... You're being fair across the board. You're offering better benefits to some employees than what you are other employees. Those that have working spouses will in a sense be penalized because their spouses work, while a non-working spouse would continue to receive full family benefits at the same cost of what I'm paying. So I guess if that's all the time that I have, then I'll say it's short for there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here, then here? Okay. We'll try to adhere to a little five-minute...
I'll be listening, I promise. You all have heard too much from me. I'm Bill Cull, President of Save the Grand Theater. I'm here, as you all know, as last year when we were unsuccessful, we requested $10,000 from the city for support through the nonprofits list. We are truly, though, really an economic development, tourism, quality of life vehicle for this community, but we're lumped in, in a category definitionally that doesn't precisely fit us. The grand, however, has generated a huge number of additional events and activities in the community, as I think in a list probably I've already repeated to you all before. Our audience has risen each year 12% in 2011, over 10, up to almost 13,000. The number of events, 69 to 90. Many small audience events that then allow people who might not have the opportunity to be entertained in the way that we do to be there. This summer, we're going to have two Lexington Children's Theater summer workshops. We're going to have summer classic film, or summer film and live entertainment for kids in daycares and in the homes to bring them downtown and to bring them into the community. We fill our local restaurants when we're active. People spend money downtown, and I think any restaurateur or other business downtown will tell you that we've been a major enhancement in this community. We had over 2,000 kids attend events last year in the theater. We recently have received a South Arts grant to support some of those activities, where we're going to take dance shows into schools, the Stewart Homeschool as well. We have received high rankings from the Kentucky Arts Council in our submissions because of the kinds of things we do. Now, you all have very hard decisions to make, and I would have difficulty certainly making those as well. But don't forget that where you have a return on the investment, which we generate, a small part of the cost of the theater, again, our goal is to have 10% of the monies to come from government support, including yours being a part of that, and then the other 90% comes from this community. There are tickets, the support of our givers, and, you know, I think that's evidence of the value of this. My time is in it for economic development, tourism, quality of life. It's not because I just want to go down and be involved in arts activities. The 3,000 hours of volunteer hours last year were a function of what those volunteers believed. All those things are evidences of the value of the theater, and hopefully tonight, you all, whether it's by reallocating money from people who perhaps aren't as deserving of hours, whether it's increasing our commitment from 5,000 to 10, however you all figure out how to do it, we just ask that you do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Identify yourself, please.
My name is Sandra Adams. I am a working spouse of a city employee. I depend on the city's insurance a lot for my healthcare. I have a lot of needs medically as far as medications. To have me completely taken off is going to hurt me financially, not as well as you all have, or insurance has increased. The premiums that we pay, along with co-payments that we didn't have before, and 5% of various services, that alone has put a burden on my family. If you take me completely off, then I don't have affordable healthcare, I don't have no way to get my medications, and for family, financial, in general, it's going to be dramatic for my family. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizens come in?
I'm an employee and also a citizen here. I share the same comments as Officer Kurtzinger and the spouse here. Raising insurance prices for working spouses is not the way to balance this budget. We've been here the last five years, and every year, the 300 employees are taking the brunt of budget cuts. We've carried it. We've known that we've needed a revenue stream, and we've got to find one. And over the last two years, I know Mr. Dawson has preached on it, yet we've still overlooked it. And I think if we're going to see a 1.7 billion budget deficit, then we need to share it with everybody that gets the services, with not just the 300 employees, but the 27,000 citizens living with us. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens come in? Any response? The commission will make a response. Commissioner Wilder?
Just to clarify a couple of things, and I... People are making some good comments today, and it's particularly grateful for all the research that went into... Where'd you go? Yeah, to the first set of comments. But just to clarify, no effort is being made to balance the budget purely on the backs of employees. I mean, the spouse, the spousal benefits, for example, as has been acknowledged, that's a $100,000 difference, and nobody's under any illusion that that's going to balance the budget. We still have a significant deficit to make up from this point. And as I'm sure you're aware, the commission's been discussing taxes, et cetera. But I mean, over the last five years, I realize that some changes have been made to employee pay and benefit packages, and we've done what we can to limit and mitigate that damage. For example, we've agreed to not allow the 1% longevity pay to phase out. But a number of changes have also been made that affect the city as a whole, including the garbage fee, which first came into place over the last five years. And we've lowered that, too, but that's still a $300,000 increase over what folks were paying five years ago. And obviously, property taxes have gone up a number of times over the last few years as well. And according to this budget, they're scheduled to go up again. So I just say that I think there's an effort being made here to spread things, to spread things around as best we can. And also, and just to note, I wouldn't say that the city is run as a business, or that I think it should be. The city provides some services that provide a financial return, but the majority of the services we provide, we do at a loss, and that's the way it's always going to be. The fire department's never going to turn a profit. Police department's never going to turn a profit. In fact, I'm not aware of any of our departments, except for maybe our grant writer, who managed to turn a profit over the expense they bring to the city. Those are services that we subsidize and that we provide to the public without any expectation of a return. I think that's the purpose of city government, is not to return a profit, it's to provide services to the public to the best of our abilities. And I realize we have made changes to benefits over the last years, and I disagree with some of them, but I'll just, I'll note that while our tax rates are lower than average compared to other areas, our benefits are also much richer than surrounding areas. And the city benefits package, even with the changes that have been made, are hands down, still, is still the best benefit package in town, bar none. So we're, I mean, we're, I think, I can't speak for anybody else, but I say that something I'm hoping to do here is to try to bring everything a little closer to imbalance while still maintaining a competitive edge over other employers and other regions. Thank you.
Commissioner Turner?
I just wanted to point out, I certainly understand the hardships of, you know, losing benefits. I'm experiencing the same thing at my place of employment, at my primary place of employment. My calls for health insurance is going up, the benefits that are provided in there are going down or is not as competitive. And unfortunately, this is a, the cutting of benefits has been a way that local governments and private businesses could compete in this very difficult economic time. I've voiced support of finding a new revenue stream. I don't know what support we have on the commission to do that. But if we can't find a revenue stream, a new revenue stream, or don't have an agreement on the commission to do that, then the only way to meet that budget, to trim, at least trim that deficit, is to start looking at some of these benefits and other line items in the budget that may need to be cut. I think it's worth noting that, if I'm not mistaken, and Randy, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the county and, both the county and the state practice a similar practice of forcing working spouses to obtain their own insurance. Is that correct?
No.
I know that's an avenue that a lot of other local governments are taking.
I'm not aware of a prohibition at either place. At the county, I think they just make the same contribution rate, which makes the family plan very expensive for employees because they're only contributing to single rate. So that leads to them, I think the last numbers we saw from them, they only had three or four family plans out of 150 plans, or I can't remember how many total plans they had. The state's kind of a blended, they do not have a prohibition, to my knowledge. They subsidize family plans, but not to the full extent. So, but their family rates are not subsidized at the level that their single plans are done. But I'm not aware of a prohibition.
I do know that there are some other local governments that have done that. You know, part of the tough choices that we have to face here is, when looking at cutting some of the, or reducing some of the budget, you know, some of them are somewhat unacceptable to me as a commissioner, including, you know, furloughing employees or browning out firehouses. All of those have very, very difficult consequences if that was to happen, not only for the employees in terms of what they're taking home and paid, but as well as the services, the citizens who depend on the services that we provide. So I think that we'll have to discuss and see where we agree on and what we can do to try to mitigate some of the concerns that employees have brought up. But no doubt, one way or the other, there are going to have to be some tough decisions made here tonight and in the coming weeks. But I appreciate everyone coming and voicing their concerns with regards to employee benefits. Thanks.
Commissioner May?
Yeah, I just would say, thanks to those that came to voice their concerns about the insurance plan. I can assure you, I'm not going to be for cutting any more benefits to employees. And as Commissioner Turner said, we'll have to be looking at some tough decisions on the budget, and we're going to do that tonight. So we'll find out in a bit how it turns out.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you all again for your comments. Any more citizens come in now? Okay, we'll move on to the discussion of the general fund budget. Mr. Owens?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting, of course, is dedicated to the discussion of the budget for 2012, 2013, and I will review a little about what has gone into the preparation so far, thus far. Staff started working on the budget in January, and on March the 9th presented the first draft of expenses versus revenues, and at that time, there was a $2.7 million gap. So that was on March 9th. Since that time, management has proposed to reduce 1.5 million from that general fund deficit by doing several things, some of which are transferring capital costs to other funds and other budget periods, and we were able to transfer about $1,040,000 worth of that deficit at that time. And then we reduced overhead costs by $116,000, and then implemented, there's consensus to implement hard labor freeze, which will save $300,000. And then the reduced healthcare cost concerning the coverage of working spouses with healthcare coverage in other workplaces. So that totaled a total reduction of $1,556,000, which is about 4.2% of our budget. The, or the deficit, I messed up. The current 2013 revised projected budget deficit is 1.2 million, and that would represent another 3.7% in order to break even. We have talked about many alternatives. We've talked about reductions that are very hard choices, many of which the commission did not choose to make because they would reduce services to our people, to our citizens. And some of those are to cut services in the area of golf, swimming, and sports programs. Another thing would be to take further cut in employee benefits, such as furloughs or layoffs. We have not gone in that direction. Another alternative would be to raise taxes, and another alternative would be to balance the budget deficit by using the reserve that we have on hand. This particular budget that we're looking at for 2012, 2013 has no raises for our employees, but no layoffs and no furloughs and no service cuts. So more overhead budget cuts will be damaging to our audit opinion also. Each year, the auditor does a comparison of the final result against budget, against the actual budget, which is a comparison included in the audit report. Timing is tight at the end of the year, so to do a sweeping budget amendment at the end of the year would not be attractive to auditors. Another thing is, in the past, we had a contingency fund. I think three years ago, it started reducing, and that fund last year was around $175,000 for unacceptable items, and this contingency has been reduced or eliminated over time. All of our program managers, in the last five to seven-year trend, program managers have been giving back money into the general fund at the end of the year. In fact, for the past three years, they have given back an average of $947,000 for each of those years. And so this is sort of where we stand, and our budget expenses right now stand at 32.2 million. The income stands at 31 million, which leaves us with a deficit of $1.2 million. We, as I say, we've gone through a series of running this by our program departments and our department heads, and have voluntarily moved many of these expenses to other funds. Capital expenses like dump trucks and big pieces of equipment have been able to be purchased out of municipal fund, and now we are at a point where we need to address this $1.2 million deficit that we still have. And so we could... Mr. Dawson, our finance director, has some additional comments at this time?
Thank you, Fred. This past week, we received some comments from the commissioners as far as other suggestions of cuts, and I passed those comments to the department managers. They have made some comments on those documents. Today, I forwarded an email to you guys, and I'd like to, I don't know if you were able to print that, so I brought copies to hand to everybody in case they weren't able to print. So I'll pass those out this time. It's okay. There, is it printed? confirm any questions that you have remaining on those documents. To the department managers.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to thank all the department heads for all the answers for my questions. I know it seems a bit nitpicky at times as a commissioner coming in, asking questions, wondering where this money's really going, and I just really appreciate your all's time in answering, answering my concerns, so that all of us can have an idea of where this money's going.
Yes.
The report we have here, where the, it shows the managers making reductions that they made.
Yeah, let me explain that to you.
Will you please, yes.
The fallout sheet?
Yeah, yeah, fallout.
Okay, yeah. If you will look at the fallout sheet, I'll just explain what I've given you here. As Fred said on the document that he was talking about earlier, the managers made cuts of approximately $524,800. You see that number on page three? That's the highlighted column there, the first column, and that's all the different departments where, and the count numbers where they cut. costs out of. And then I laid that against Commissioner Wilder's cuts that he had on his email. I laid it against his request. And he had, I think he had approximately $217,000, almost $218,000 worth of cuts that he had proposed from his review of the materials. So that's what that was. And then the management comments down at the side are the comments that came back from the managers regarding proposed cuts, so. I just wanted everybody to be able to see that. And I wanted to lay down the email that Katie had sent out next to that, but I wasn't able to match up perfectly all the account numbers. So that's why I didn't lay hers down against that. But we did, like Katie said, we did respond to her questions as well on her email. And those comments are highlighted in the doc there. Did you see them both? So that's kind of the way we responded to the questions. And like I said, if you've got any questions on this, these two documents, please feel free to ask me or any other manager.
Mr. Dawson, just for clarification, the responses to Commissioner Haddon's questions and comments were on a separate memo.
Mm-hmm.
It's dated May 25. It's about a four-page memo. I didn't know if everybody's on the same page.
Right. That's the eight and a half by 11 document that I handed you. And then Chief Posage, he had some comments that he made on a separate sheet, and that was the third document that I handed you that was addressing some of Commissioner Wilder's comments and questions.
Okay, so as a result of the department heads, you've got it down to 1.2 million?
Yes, sir. We've taken out 1.5 million, which was the cost from the original, from the original budget. 2.7 down to the 1.2.
Okay, does any question want to respond to these things? I thank you. I know you've had a difficult time in this.
But everybody's worked together. And I think, you know, Fred mentioned this at the beginning of the process. It's a team, a team process. And it's not just the last three months. It's been, you know, over the last year, any decisions that we make or anything that we discuss or the work that we do during the year, all those rolls into this budget. So it's a 360-day process is what it amounts to, you know, when you work on this budget, so.
Is this about the fourth draft?
Yeah, this is the fourth or fifth. I think this might be the fifth adjustment that we've made. It's last adjustment, it's the fifth one. Thank you, though.
Personally, I'll just make a statement. I personally feel that the staff has done about all they can do. And I'm not inclined personally to raise taxes, to increase any more revenue flow. I'm just betting where I stand. And I'm, seeing the layout here between what departments have done and comments made as to Commissioner Wilder's other requests, I'm prepared to say we accept this and take it out of the reserve. That's where I stand. Now, he has a comment he'll commit. Commissioner Wilder.
I'd be prepared to take a few hundred thousand dollars out of reserve. We believe that we're on track to end this fiscal year. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Steve. We're on, it looks like we're on track to end this fiscal year with 8.4, 8.5 in reserve?
That's, yes, sir. That's the estimates that I can see right now. But I'm not, I'm not perfectly sure that number's going to hit exactly that level.
The, you know, conventional wisdom being that it's a good idea to keep 25%, and I've never entirely subscribed to this conventional wisdom. The conventional wisdom being that it's wise to keep 25% of our operating budget in reserve. It's kind of been inferred that that would affect our bond rating. Is that, can we get some clarity on whether or not dipping below that 25% actually would have an impact on our bond rating?
I can't say perfectly, but I just, I received, like, I've got some comments and some emails back and forth that transpired last time we issued a bond. And I had to go to Standards and Poor and ask for a bond, a rating on our financial statements. They asked me that question. They asked me, is your goal still 25%? Holding 25% of your expenses in reserve? They asked me specifically that question. And they asked me also, is the commission's goal to keep a structurally balanced budget? And they also made the comment after they reassessed our bond rating and raised it, they said that the reason why they raised it is because we were willing to raise fees and/or lower expenses to keep a structurally balanced budget. That's the reason they raised us from an A-plus to a double A-minus. They did that in 2010. That's what, you know, but those were informal comments.
Sure.
That I received. And I've got, of course, I've got the emails. I can, anybody wants to see the open records, I can show them the information that was going back and forth between myself and the lady that did the rating.
Thanks, Steve. Well, and I'd be happy to discuss going further than this if that's what folks really want to do. But I would be comfortable taking 400 out. I would be comfortable using 400 in reserves to balance this because that would, that would take us down to, well, if, let's say we hit 8.5, that would take us down to 8.1, which would keep us above 25% for our anticipated, if our anticipated budget right now is, I've got so many sheets in front of me. Is 32.2. And that, then a quarter of that is 8,500,000. So I'd be comfortable taking 400 out, using 400, which would knock the 1.2 million down to 800,000. But I would still prefer that we do what we can to use other measures to close that gap. And I think there are still some savings to be realized in other ways that we can do that. I'm still inclined to go through some of these lines, which we put out there for the last couple of meetings, which we agreed to do. But before getting into that, there is some broader stuff. For example, we had asked for some feedback on the possibility of charging a more appropriate fee for security at parades and things. Do we have any formal feedback on that? Is there any way to reflect that in the numbers?
The short answer is no. I haven't looked around to see what others charge. Just in discussions, maybe some of the fees going up, maybe like instead of a token amount like the $25 to be a $250, something like that. If you charge actual price for the security, like I say, typical hourly wage is with salary and benefits is $40 an hour. And your typical 5K races, 15 officers. Last year, among the overtime items that we incurred, well, actually, in this budget year so far to date, I can tell you how many hours of overtime we have for items like races and parades. And of course, this is just the beginning of the season. There's events almost every weekend, every other weekend, that's going to require at least a minimal amount of manpower. But I think so far, I brought everything and I had nothing, so. I think it's about 2,500 man-hours, just off the top of my head, about 2,500 man-hours so far this year for events and parades. And that's out of a total of about 9,500 overtime hours that we've incurred to date so far. Of course, there, part of that, probably about another 2,500 of that overtime is reimbursable overtime that we get back on a federal grant for traffic enforcement and one for DEA Task Force. So I'm not sure that I answered anyone's question there. But like I say, we haven't explored charging an actual fee for events or what that fee would have to be.
Thanks, Steve. Well, it sounds like it's probably too late to get that worked out and factored into a budget. But if we do that, that would still, if we do that in time, that would still make it easier for the next budget to come in under budget. Which would make it easier for me to justify taking money out of the reserve now.
But one thing I want to point out about these events, you know, you have so many different community groups that want to organize these events. Some of them, some of them they make money on for their group or cause or whatever. And, you know, I urge you to consider that, you know, whatever community events that you want to, if this is a path you want to go down to, you know, nominate, you know, your couple of community events that you're going to, you know, we're going to have, like, well, like the LA Classic, we've already committed, the city's committed, the police department to provide security and traffic control for that. So that's a fixed cost that we know we have, that, you know, we have to provide out of our budget, that we have to, you know, come out of this. If we cut a discretionary fund, then, you know, that's still one of the base things that we have to provide. Expo's kind of on its own. They pay us for security, so we don't have to worry about that. You know, inauguration, Christmas parade, you know, those types of things, you'd probably want to deem as city-certified events. And everything else is, would be subject to either the higher fee or the actual cost of manning that event.
The state doesn't cover inauguration?
No. Or derby breakfast.
Right. I mean, I'm pretty comfortable charging them a fee for that considering that they don't pay taxes.
Wow. You know, these things happen, and we have to be there.
Sure.
We have to be where the people converge.
Sure. Regarding garbage, staff recommended, or I don't know, it wasn't recommended, but Jeff and Tom just brought it up as a possibility in terms of the garbage program, in terms of repeat overflows simply being upgraded to larger containers. That's something that other cities do that I think makes a lot of sense. The reason I bring it up within this context is that if we're running short on the small carts, that could free up small carts without having to purchase new ones. And for that matter, I know for a fact that there are folks out on the street who have the smallest recycling container because they think that it would cost them something to upgrade. So I'm hopeful that a second round of outreach and education in July could encourage or incentivize some folks to go ahead and upgrade their recycling containers for free, which would again free up some of the small carts. But either way, I guess I'd like to see what we can do to free up the small carts that could be in circulation before we buy new ones. Is that anything that Jeff or Tom would want to send off on?
Well, our bills are going out July 1st, so we could put something in that packet, some information about reminding people they could upsize their recycling cart for no charge that could be added into the bill as well.
Any objection to, and would there be any objection to it just at another work session? Having a more in-depth discussion about upgrading the cart?
No objection to that. If that's an option that we consider, then that's something I want to make sure we give public ample time to respond on.
Of course.
Time to think about it and comment on it to us.
Well, I'm not even talking about making a decision in the near future, but just going ahead and, I mean, I understand you all have already done some homework on that possibility because you brought it to us in the first place.
That's correct.
But is that something you'd be prepared to discuss within the next month or two?
We could work with, you know, revise the ordinance and bring that for discussion at a future work session. Because I believe it would require an ordinance change.
It would.
So we could draft something that puts that language in there, in the ordinance.
I'd like for us to at least look at that and consider it. Is that? Okay.
I don't understand what you're saying. Y'all was talking over that way. I know you're talking about the garbage can, but I don't know what you're talking about.
The, Jeff and Tom mentioned a while ago the possibility of, instead of repeatedly issuing citations for folks who are overflowing their garbage, it seems it would be easier on them, as in it would be easier on our citizens who are having overflow problems, and easier on us to just automatically upgrade the size of their container. That would be cheaper for the citizens than paying a string of $25 citations for overflowing. That would also free up some of the small containers right now that we're running short on and help us possibly avoid the expense of purchasing new carts.
Just kind of go into the work session.
Thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Does anybody have any broad stuff they want to talk about before we start picking up the line by line?
I missed a while ago that I was preparing to support the budget that's presented here with the, but there is one more thing. I would like to remove the, I would suggest removing the sustainability coordinator funds. And with that, I'm prepared to approve the budget and move on.
I'm right there with you, Mayor. I'll support it, Mayor.
Pardon me?
I'll support it.
You support it?
Mayor, I'd be willing at this point to suspend that funding because of when we first started looking at that. I still support the position, but the funding, you're saying just, you're not talking about, you're talking about suspending.
Yeah, take the money.
Take the money out, but not the, because the position is set by ordinance and this is just the funding for it. Is that right?
That's all I'm saying, you know.
And then the other part is you're saying to support the staff recommendation to take the 1.2 billion minus the, whatever the cost for sustainability coordinator is, out of reserve?
Yes, that's what I'm supporting.
Okay, I can support that.
You support that?
Yes, sir.
I was going to say, Mayor, the reason I support that is now's not a good time to be talking about raising taxes on citizens or anyone when we've got a down a good time to be talking about raising taxes on citizens or anyone, when we've got a downturn economy, which hopefully will go up soon, but that would, in my opinion, it would inhibit possible economic growth if we raise our taxes. The ratings that we received over the years were because Frankfurt has a low tax rate compared to other communities, and I don't want to do anything to upset that, and I'm not sure if anybody's here from, I don't have anybody from our Economic Development Group here, but I'm sure they would weigh in and say the same thing, that would not encourage people to come and locate businesses here.
Back about three weeks ago, I had a meeting with some people from Timber Commerce and other businesses, to discuss it, and it was unanimous, there it is, that not to, not to raise the occupation tax. They thought it'd be a detriment to our system.
I wanted to comment on the Sustainability Coordinator, and I certainly understand my fellow commissioners and what they're trying to do, but I just want to remind those here and maybe watching from home, that I believe that it's, it is times like these that you need to focus on cutting long-term costs. I mean, we're cutting short-term costs, and that seems to be what we've done every year. We put a couple Band-Aids on here and there, and get through the budget process. And what continuously happens, and I think our city staff, who came and commented this morning, or not this morning, it was a little while ago, and said that it seems like every year, they have to brace themselves for, you know, more budget problems the next year. And the next year, you've got to brace yourself again, no raises, more budget problems. So one of the things that this commission is, I'm proud of, is really focused on cutting those long-term costs, putting in programs that turn that curve down. We've worked on the city's health insurance program, we've worked on the city's solid waste collection program, and I think that the Sustainability Coordinator is integral in cutting those long-term costs, because one of the things that we know that's increasing exponentially is cost of energy. And this is something that other government entities have, have used, and it's worked success, and it's been very successful. And I think it's something that we could do and be very successful with here in the city of Frankfurt. I think the best way to cut those long-term, or cut the short-term costs of hiring the Sustainability Coordinator is to try to reach out and work with other government entities to share in that cost. And the benefit for that is, is that not only does the people, the city of Frankfurt benefit from those energy savings and the cost they're at for, but so do the people, whether it's the county, the county would benefit if it's the university, tuition, people who are paying taxes and are paying tuition for the university would pay, would benefit from that. So would have much more widespread benefits if we were able to share those costs with other government entities. But I think it's an essential position for the city, because it does prepare us, you know, so that next year, maybe the budget's not as bad, and the year after, it's not as bad. And as the economy begins to improve, and we start to see revenues grow again, then we're no longer in this budget problem, and we have a Sustainability Coordinator who has already got years in of service, and who has cut those costs. So I think it's a, I think it's a benefit to keep that on there. I certainly respect the opinions of my fellow commissioners, but that's where I stand regarding the Sustainability Coordinator.
All right, Commissioner Water.
You know, I've been willing to consider just about every option on the table in front of us, including tax increases. And two weeks ago, I was, I said that I would, I would be opposed to them unless there could be an appropriate tax decrease to accompany. So is that, in other words, if occupational taxes go up and property taxes go down, that spurs economic development to the extent that that, for a business's bottom line, the occupational taxes don't affect a business's bottom line, but the, but the property taxes do. And that also kind of decreases, in some ways decreases, the local tax burden and spreads it to the thousands of folks who come in from out of town to work here. Because we have, we do have to maintain a, a level of service for a city that's much larger, we have to maintain a much higher level of service in your average 27,000 population city, because of all, because of state government, because of all the folks who come in here. So it seems only fair to kind of spread that out a bit. At the, at the, of course, I was bringing that up in the context of insurance premium tax, which we can't adjust, and I said at the time that I would be opposed to doing that with occupational taxes, but I was, at that time, the mayor and commissioner Hinton were in support of that, and I, I came around to it because of the, I think the really articulate and reasonable case that the commissioner Hinton made. And she changed my mind on that, and now it looks like we're back. It looks like a lot of minds have changed over the last couple of weeks. It looks like a lot of minds are changing on a lot of things, including the Sustainability Coordinator, and that's particularly disappointing, because, I mean, one of the reasons that our budget's having a hard time, and the budgets around the, the state and around the country, and even around the world are having a hard time, is because of a lack of long-term planning. I mean, it's always easier to, it's always easier to just keep providing services and to not raise taxes and to just take money out of reserve, but that doesn't, that doesn't solve any problems. I mean, if we, if we just balance the budget with the reserves, that's not going to make things any easier next year. In fact, it's just going to make things harder next year, and that's the real catch. And that's why I think measures like the Sustainability Coordinator and like the garbage program, that are difficult in the short term, but that make things easier, that make things easier going down the road, I mean, that's why they're so, those measures are so vital. I mean, if the city had hired a Sustainability Coordinator four years ago, this budget would be easier to balance. So again, I'll ask, and nobody's ever been able to answer a single one of these questions, but if large cities and small cities and private businesses and universities and private companies have all been able to save money by hiring a professional to mitigate their energy expenses, why can't the city? That's one question nobody's been able to answer. If everybody else saves money by doing this, why wouldn't we? The second question is, if, if we can do this in-house, as people keep suggesting, then why haven't we succeeded after four years of trying? I should have written all three questions down, because I can't remember the third one. But the point is, we know this saves money. It always saves money. So the idea that we can save money by not doing it hasn't worked for four years in a row, and I have no reason to think that it would work now. My final comment on the way things are headed is, like I said, I've been willing to consider every option on the table here, including making further budget cuts, including restructuring revenue, including dealing with fees, et cetera, and including dealing with employee benefits. But it, but I'm, I'm only willing to consider making these changes to employee benefits within the context of spreading that out across the board. I mean, I agree with the employees who are saying that we shouldn't only balance the budget on their backs. And if the only, if the only people are going to require to take a hit in this process are the employees, then I, then I can't support that. I mean, I can support making the changes to benefits, as long as we're spreading things out a little bit. But right now, folks are, right now, we've got a majority who are saying that they want to, right now, we've, right now, we've got a majority agreement to cut, and I, we're getting mixed messages, and people are changing their minds left and right. But right now, this is all going to come out of, out of the reserves and out of employee benefits, and that's not, I don't think that's responsible, I don't think it's smart for the wrong term, I don't think it's fair to our employees. And even though I, you know, it might make folks happy in the short term, I don't think it's fair to our citizens or the city as a whole, that's all.
Commissioner Bay.
I just want, just want to clarify something. I still think at some point, I've, I've had a conversation with the city manager, just to say, from the last meeting when it was brought to attention that the county and Frankfurt Plant Board may be interested in sharing the cost of someone to deal with our sustainability, the energy savings. And I think if we could direct that that still be pursued, and then I've since had some other folks offer some other thoughts on that, that in the short term, if department heads could do like the low-hanging fruit things, the obvious energy consumption cutbacks, then I think if we could focus on that, as has been said, that we could probably save some energy costs in the short term and still come back, if possible, as soon as funding's available, on the position. But what, what really sort of caught my attention is, with the number of cuts that were being proposed for employee benefits, and the possibilities of tax increases in a time when we have a downward, a downturn in the economy, that's what really sort of brought that issue to, to where it is with me, because I still want to do everything we can to do the energy cost reduction methods.
Commissioner Hinton.
I would just like to say that there's a large percentage of our budget that's fixed on cost alone for employees and pensions and healthcare. And I do believe in cost savings, don't get me wrong, but it's not recouping this year. It's an attempt to initiate this year, starting with the garbage. And I do think that there was support for an insurance premium tax, however, it can't be done at this point, but I do believe that we can still discuss this further after this budget is passed, if there is support for it, which it seemed like there was support for it. It just can't be done at this time. And as well with the Sustainability Coordinator, if, as it was presented, the information can come from a free website, I don't know why we need to pay so much $66,000 if we can start initiating our own, or even getting an intern in to help us initiate it, instead of paying $66,000 on a free website. And that's, that's all.
I will, I will note that there's, there's no such thing as a website that could save the city $60,000. I mean, part of the Sustainability, part of a Sustainability Coordinator's job is to actually track all the city's energy usage, and building to building, and vehicle to vehicle, et cetera, and then to collate that data and to figure out where the potential energy savings are, and to deal with that, et cetera. And so, I mean, a website can offer information and tips on HVAC systems and lighting systems, et cetera, and that's the kind of thing that I think staff have actually been doing a pretty good job of, picking that low-hanging fruit over the last few years. But the time and effort it takes to collate the data, to collect all the data, I mean, that's a, that takes a lot of man-hours from a, from a dedicated person. And I think that's one of the reasons why staff haven't succeeded in doing that with themselves over the last few years, because that's just too many hours for somebody who isn't dedicated to it. And I understand that there hasn't, you know, there was majority support for discussing the insurance premium, and that's something the next commission will have to deal with, obviously, because that's a decision that has to be made, some bizarre time, like March So something, I mean, that's something I hope the next commission considers or discusses, but that's out of our hands.
Okay, then we, then we have, what we had discussion here, that we approved the budget for the, you have one?
Mm-hmm.
And then with the, with the removal of the salary for the Sustainability Coordinator.
I think it's a freeze.
Yes. It's actually, because the position's still there.
Yeah, okay. Yes, Commissioner Water.
One more point or question, and this is, this is something that went out in the email discussions, and we didn't get a response to. You know, most of our departments are just holding steady. They're not, you know, they're just kind of holding the line, except obviously for our Parks Department, which is, I've been developing lots of new spaces and sites and materials over the last, even, even over the last two years, but everybody else has been cutting back on what they've been able to do. And I know that we're also having a hard time maintaining and keeping up with the stuff we already have. So again, I think, I think it would behoove us, as long as times are tough, for a year at least, to just issue a moratorium on new development in the Parks Department, and just maintain what we've got instead of building new stuff. And I, and I guess I don't really, I mean, I understand that we need police officers on the street, I understand that we need, you know, firemen in the station, I understand that we need streets and roads and sewers, and I understand that we, that we have a valuable park system, and I'm all for maintaining what we've got, I'm not suggesting closing down the golf course, or cutting the summer programs, et cetera. But I, I don't believe that it would be some dire setback to the city to not build some new stuff for, for a year. And I'm not sure exactly what's on the slate to be built, I mean, we weren't informed in advance of some of the stuff that was built during the last year. But I, I, seeing as how the Parks budget hasn't shrunk considerably, and seeing as how we built a bunch of new stuff over the course of the last year, I, I think it is pretty safe to assume that there is some new development slated. I mean, I've heard rumors about it, at least.
The, the parks gets a lot of grabs, do they not?
Do we have the match?
Mr. Parrish, would you come forward, please?
Well, first of all, I'd like to ask Commissioner Water what you exactly mean by a moratorium on, I don't know what a moratorium is, on new development, and exactly what you're talking about. There's not been any land acquisition, other than a few parcels at Coat Springs Park, which does not really require any maintenance.
Uh-huh.
And the new, I had Rebecca Hall pull, any new developments that we've done. First of all, let me clarify for, you all sent out in both your emails, and every line item budget, I think in all the city, there is a line item called building materials. And I think you all put in there, I've got, you know, like, we need to quit building, and, but we don't build out of that, that is just strictly materials and supplies, like if you need lumber, if you need some fence, if you need a lock on a door, that's just, that's building materials, material supplies, that's not new construction. Okay, I answered that in the, in the emails. Some of the new developments that have come about, actually, we did not even really pursue, such as the World Oaks Amphitheater was a $110,000 donation from the World Oaks Foundation. The stream mitigation, restoration project of $1.2 million from Fish and Wildlife is completely free money, non-matching money. It's listed, our urban forestry grant, the Easton Foundation for Archery was $6,000, $6,000 non-matching. There are some matching, like with the land-water conservation, the timber frame shelter, both recreational trails grants are matching, however, one we're going to do in kind. The Fantasy Forest Project is a small matching grant. So you can see, Rebecca did this, our grants writer, over the past three and a half years, we have brought in $1,940,500 in grants to the city of Frankfurt, which has required $67,250 of cash match, and $58,743 of in-kind labor. So I think as far as new development can be said, there's $2 million of grant money that Frankfurt can be proud of the facilities, and for only a $67,000 return, or $67,000 investment. And we don't have a whole lot of new development on the board that I'm aware of. There's been talk of things, you know, everybody's talked of an aquatic center, everybody, there's been talk of an indoor tennis center. There's been a lot of things brought up, but as far as actual development, these are, these would be what I would call things that have been developed. And that's, that's a listing of any kind of new development, so Commissioner, I, you know.
This is the kind of thing I'm talking about, because this, because this costs us in terms of in-kind and cash matches, $126,000 to do this stuff, and some of it included like laying a lot of pavement at Coat Springs, I mean, that's, that's, that's real money. I mean, $126,000 is real money.
Well, the $58,743 is in-kind, that's like.
I understand.
You know, the street department helps us with, and using the equipment, our administration cost, or what we've done in kind, so.
No, I understand that, but those are, that's still, those are still salary, you know, that's still, those are still paychecks we have to cut, and in a lot of cases, my understanding is that in-kind work comes by way of our part-time, comes by way of Parks employees.
The one now.
My understanding is that a, is that a fair amount of that in-kind labor work comes by way of our Parks employees.
Yeah, and Public Works has done a lot for us.
I guess I'd be curious to see the split between Parks employees and Public Works on that, because our Public Works employees, assuming none of them were working overtime to do this, then that would just be.
Well, and a lot of it is equipment, too. Well, and a lot of it is equipment, too.
Okay.
Like graders and bulldozers and dump trucks, so a lot of the in-kind, we can use our, such as the Wilkinson, the Wilkinson Street Trail and that type of thing, you know, we can use our in-kind services, you know, as far as equipment.
Sure. My point being that, and I'd be curious to see the breakdown on this, but at least some of the in-kind here is coming by way of, you know, coming by way of actual labor hours within the Parks Department. That's correct, right?
Some, some is, but most of it is public works. I mean, a lot of it, as Jeff can tell you, you know, we've worked with the street and roads on a lot of it.
Because that's still an area where I, I think frankly...
Well, and...
An area where I think frankly we need to make some cuts is to some of the labor in the Parks Department. And this is, this has kind of been an open secret at City Hall for a while, it's something we've discussed publicly. You know, but we've been aware of, you know, part-time employees faking hours on their time sheets and getting paid for work they haven't done, being sent home early and filling out their time sheets. And I don't even know how many, how many seasonal employees I've talked to who tell me a lot of time they just don't even have enough to do to keep them busy that whole time. I mean, that's their justification for not always working the hours that are posted, is that there's not always enough work for them to do. And that's something that, you know, that's something that, that, you know, I know you're aware of. We discussed this, gosh, three years ago. And at the time, and I've also discussed this with the mayor and previous city manager.
Are you telling me you see him to the budget right now?
This is very much a budget, yes, because we spend, no, we spend, I mean, we spend money on this stuff, is my point. My, I guess my point is that if we, if we have money to pay folks to not work, then we can afford to turn some of that money out. I mean, it's, that, the activity's still going on.
Well, I'm not aware of paying people not to work. I mean, I don't know where that's coming from or from what, but we, as per request, we had a meeting with Randy Donahue and all our supervisory people in the Parks Department. And we went over time sheet management, we reiterated that somebody had mentioned that and that to all supervisors and every, every part-time employee in the department received a letter or is receiving a letter, some of the umpires and scorekeepers. It's taken a little time to get out to, but about any type of, you know, like you're talking about, if somebody's trying to cheat on their time sheet or something like that, we're certainly looking into that very heavily.
I mean, pretty hard evidence was presented a few years ago, and nothing was done about it in terms of the employees that were, that were faking their time sheets. And some folks, I mean, told me flat out, one employee, for example, told me flat out she wanted to be paid $10 an hour, she was only being paid eight, and so she was told, and granted, this goes back, but she said that she was told by the, by her supervisor, that the Parks Director, who was Steve Brooks at the time, told her supervisor to tell her that, to just add some extra hours.
Commissioner, don't bring your names in. That isn't appropriate. We're talking about the budget now. If you want to talk about the budget, if you're getting other types of things, we have a, we can have a separate meeting.
This is, we're talking about, this has everything to do with the budget, Mayor, because we're talking about money.
Yeah, but this...
Money that's going out.
You get personal.
And an employee was told, not trying to get...
Speak to the point of the money.
All right.
Please do.
The point is that an employee was encouraged to add hours to her time sheet so that she could bring in the equivalent of what she was asking for, and that came all the way down from the top. And when we talked about this three years ago, you all assured me that there was some, that there was a way things used to be run and that things would be different, you know, but just asked, you know, to have time to straighten things out and assured me that you all would get stuff sorted out, even as soon as last March. I mean, I can confirm that folks are filling out time sheets in advance of, you know, are filling out time sheets like days in advance and then not showing up to work. I mean, I...
Well, I'm certainly not aware of that, and since this has been brought up on the table, like you said, just a little while back.
Three years, isn't that a long time ago?
No, I'm talking about just recently. We, we have taken measures to, if that certainly is happening, it will not happen, but I'm not aware that that has ever happened.
But that's my point, is that that's the same thing I heard three years ago, and then nothing got done about it then.
Keep, keep to the budget, don't talk about...
Well, that's, that's my point, though, is that if it was happening three years ago, nothing got done about it. It's still happening, we're still being assured that this is going to be taken care of, but the deeper point is that, I think the deeper point is that, okay, I guess, I guess here's my point. Let's say we have X number of employees in the Parks Department, and let's say they're doing, let's say they're being paid to do, I'm going to make these numbers up for the sake of an analogy. Let's say we have X number of employees and they're being paid to do 1,000 hours of work a week, and in reality, they're doing 800. And let's say the Parks Department's getting by just fine, because as far as I can tell, it is getting by just fine.
He can't say he was living with us.
Then it seems to me that rather than demanding that those employees actually do that extra 200 hours' worth of work, it seems to me that we can just, just cut the budget down. I mean, the point is, right now, we are paying people for hours that aren't being worked.
You have documentation for that?
Absolutely, I've got documentation going back three years, and you know that.
No, 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 no. You're talking about different, I hope we have an opportunity to discuss this later in time. This is a budget thing.
It is a budget thing.
It certainly is, but you're making accusations about things and you have, what's the documentation for it now? You don't have it there right now. You make, you say you have it, but you can't put dollars to it. Can you put dollars to it?
No, I can't, I can't put, I mean, no, I can't put dollars to it, and I said I couldn't put dollars to it.
But then talk about the budget, we talk about the budget.
Right, let's talk about the budget. Let's talk about the budget. Well, I mean, right, I mean, I can go back to older folks, I mean, these are folks who are still working here, and so like the mayor said, I'll keep names out of it, but here's an email from an employee to another employee saying, "Not sure on golf now, going through one of my not sleeping things, only worked a couple hours today because I didn't give a 20-minute sleep last night, not sure about Wednesday yet." According to this, and that person ended up not coming in on Wednesday, but according to the time sheets, they worked six and a half hours both days. I'll teen examples of that employee. I've got tons of evidence here. Where's something more recent? Let's see, just, just on the...
Commissioner...
Just last month, just last month, I went down to Coatspringe.
You're trying to berate, we have a person here.
Yeah.
We're talking about the budget.
This is, they're not giving those money.
You so often, you try to address people in public, so come on, keep it, keep it on the...
Every time I'm giving this stuff outside, this is about the budget. This is about the budget. I'm talking about hard evidence that people are getting paid for not, for hours that they're not actually working.
Well, if you...
Getting paid money out of the budget that we can cut out of the budget. That's my point. With all due respect, Mayor, every time we bring this stuff up in close session, when it comes out later, we're told, oh, well, that, nothing we say in close session actually counts. This stuff has, I mean, we've been told repeatedly that this stuff has to be brought up in public to even be on the record or to even count for anything. There's this catch-22 here. I mean, but this stuff has been kept under the rug for three years now, and nothing's been done about it. And I can't, I can't guarantee that I'm still going to be here in six months or seven months. None of us can. So it's been down, it's getting down to the wire in terms of dealing with this stuff. We haven't dealt with it, we haven't dealt with it behind the scenes.
So would you say that if you want to make a proposal, that you want to cut the budget for the, for the Parks Department for part-time help or what have you, make that, then you want to have a discussion about it.
Fair enough, but I've got to justify the cut.
But make your proposal to cut the budget and see if you have the support for it.
Well, I guess my proposal would be to cut the, just cut the budget by 100, let's just say, let's just say cut the budget by $126,000. That's the amount that we, I think that would, that would, that would satisfy.
Do you have any support for that?
I would support a smaller cut, but...
What do you mean?
I would support a smaller cut, I don't know if...
What, you support the number?
I would support around $50,000 cut in the budget.
Commissioner May?
Clarification, what, you're talking about cutting the Parks Department budget or the total budget?
That's what you're saying, is that...
Oh, yeah, just the budget.
Are we, are we talking about, like, the general, like, if you look under, it's a budget item number 80, is there, is there budget codes? So we're taking that out of what?
Well, that's, I mean, I'm, you know, if folks want me to, I'm happy to go, like, I mean, I've already gone through the whole budget line by line and suggested a number of very specific line by line breakdown points, and this is the third meeting in a row where we've declined to discuss those. So without getting that specific, I'm happy to just say $50,000 and let the Parks Department sort out where, where those cuts can be made. I mean, I can prescribe them if folks really want me to, but I'm, I'm happy to grant some leeway. I mean, if folks want me to prescribe them, I assume, I assume the department would rather have discretion over where that $50,000 comes out.
Is there any support for that? I do not support it.
Commissioner Hedin?
Give me just a second, Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you, sorry.
And your recommendation, Commissioner, I believe, Commissioner Wilder, you sent out, I want to say it was, 49-9 in recommended cuts, is that correct? 49-8?
You mean just to the...
With golf and parks and swimming pools and Riverview Park and Lakeview Park and Ford Hill and forestry.
I think, I think, no, yeah, I've got the total.
I think it totaled 49-9.
And some of that came, you know, some of that was in terms of maintenance and repair and whatnot, but yeah, yeah, it was a, call it a rough 50. And that's, and that's being prescribed line by line. I mean, if that...
Now, there was, there was an item in there that you all questioned, and I guess it was handwritten in on the budget, there was a $15,000 request, and Commissioner Hedin, you mentioned it, in Riverview Park under miscellaneous?
Yeah.
What was going on? That was a new request for, to rip wrap the riverbank at the boat dock that had been recommended. That was a new request.
All right.
That 15, you know, was not, you know, we didn't know if it would be funded or not, but the last couple of years where we've had the floods and the riverbank has been kind of churned out right there where the boat dock is, that was to rip wrap the riverbank, and that was the, an additional new request of 15.
I understand, and just for clarification for the public, that request was for $15,000, yet actual in '09 and '10 it was only $627, and in '10, I'm sorry, in '10 and '11 it was only $104 were spent out of the requested $15,000, so.
Well, there's not, there wasn't any money in that account. That was put in there this year as a request.
I'm just trying to...
So that, that was $15,000 right there.
I mean, in a nutshell, I guess my recommend, you know, my point is that if the Parks Department, if the Parks Department, and I'm not suggesting we scrape the budget down at this level, but if the Parks Department had just enough money to get by, then this kind of thing wouldn't be going on. I mean, so my recommendation is that we, I think the city should just cut the, cut the budget by $50,000 a year, every year, until this stuff stops, because at some point it's got to stop. I mean, at some point, the hammer comes down, and this kind of thing doesn't happen anymore. But there's got to be some, I mean, there's got to be a, there's got to be consequences.
Okay, do we have, do we have two other commissioners wanting to support $50,000 reduction in the Parks budget?
I made my comment on that.
You did?
Yeah.
Is it Commissioner May, Commissioner Hedin? I don't know. So that's two, two.
I have mine marked, I think around 27 instead of 50.
I think I have a point, my question, that my, my question, when I ended up, that included golf, because golf is...
Separate.
Separate. Okay, I just wanted to be sure, because I was coming up with the same question.
Okay.
I said, I think mine averaged around about 27,000 in cuts for the parks, which was answered.
Your suggestion, 27, and the other two are suggesting 50. If y'all come to compromise, then we go back to what we said a while ago, we want to accept the budget with the caveat that we take out the sustainability coordinators, and now this would be additional whatever amount of money.
I mean, I still feel like this is a really irresponsible budget. I mean, this doesn't, this doesn't solve any of the city's fiscal problems. It doesn't even address them, it just kicks the can down the road for another year. And I realize that this is an election year and it's hard to actually solve any problems, but...
Okay, so Commissioner Hedin, do you, you do want to go with the 50, or you do not move with the 50? Are you suggesting that you want 27? That's all I want to know. If so, then they better, you all got to come to some kind of agreement.
Right. And I understand, too, as well with the Parks Department, I mean, I think sometimes there's overstaff of some part-time employees, such as at the, some of the ballgames. I think the other day, there were six people working a concession stand and probably only needed two, which may be some other things for the department to look at, and...
Okay.
Is the number of staffing at certain areas.
That's my, that's my point, though, is that a trimmer budget would force them to look at that.
Mm-hmm. And I understand, I understand. All right, it's 50, as low as you're willing to go, Commissioner Wilder?
I mean, I'll take what I can get. 50's a compromise now from 125.
Right, right. And how do you feel about that with your budget? I know it's, I know it's already seemed strapped, and I know your department seems to be pretty easy to look at, I mean, you're in the public's eye a lot.
Yeah, and I feel like we do a lot of great things for the city, and we brought in a lot of grant, grant money, and, and talking about building different structures, you know, the, we have a great reputation with, with the state and with Land Water Conservation Department, local government, and Fish and Wildlife and people we work with. Now, as far as staffing and what you're suggesting on staffing and everything, I'll be glad to take a look at it with the city manager and see what, what we feel like is a place we could make cuts or trim back some, which we, we have been doing through the years. So...
So what you...
And as far as, as far as the time sheet accusations and things like that, we are spread out a whole lot. It's not like, it's not like we all report to one building. We have probably 15 workstations, and we have to rely on our supervisors in the field. You know, the David Newmans and the grant writers and the people we have to trust, they're the ones that the people come into and sign the time sheets. And, you know, so we do have, have a lot of different areas, which saves on a lot of travel and that type of thing, rather than everybody report into one building and disperse, you know, that would, that would eat up too much time. So we do depend on our, on our frontline supervisors to, to, we have to have some trust, and so, but certainly if there is a breach of trust, we'll, we'll take care of it.
One other question, if, without making any cuts, I know time clocks would probably cost some money, but has your, has your department...
We've done all kinds of things like that. We've time clocks, we've, we've used time clocks, and, you know, if somebody's going to try to cheat on their time, they can cheat on a time clock just as well, they can cheat on a time sheet, you know, somebody, so. And with, like, at ballgames at night, you know, you do have concession workers, you have umpires, you have people, you have life... have umpires, you have people, you have lifeguards that work during the day and come back for a pool party at night, you know, and that type of thing. But we're not opposed to looking at, at anything that can make the operation more efficient.
I will say that, I mean, electronic time clocks are pretty hard to cheat. I mean, if you have a, if you have a city ID and that's the only ID that'll register you logged in and out of work, that's, uh, that's pretty hard to work around.
Well, when Randy first came on, we looked at like they have in, like in, in restaurants, you know, like on a computer where you do slide your card and stuff like that, but we'd have to be putting them in concession stands and, and all that type of thing, so. But, uh, we had a meeting with Randy the other day and we're willing to, to look at anything that would help make it, what we feel more efficient, what he feels and the city manager feels more efficient.
Okay, and, um, I guess one thing to, to think about with that is that you can actually just have one, uh, one designated station per area. So, instead of having one in every concession stand, you can just have one at a certain area, like at East Frankfurt Park, where, where it would slide, where people would meet versus one in a batting, batting booth or whatever you call it.
Right.
I'm willing to, to not cut it if you're willing to, to look at using those funds for something more operable, such as saving the cost.
If you pursue it through the city manager, we'll be glad to take any recommendations in consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner May, you want?
I was just going to say on that line, just made me think, I can go through and try to piece it through the different sections of the Parks Department, but to just be quick if I just ask the question. Since I've, the amount of overtime and the types of in-kind contributions, loaning equipment, staffing, the events like we do downtown, like we do a lot for the Derby, Derby breakfast, races, those types of things, and the downtown Frankfurt, the, the concert series that, that started several years ago. About how much would you say, just estimate?
Overtime?
Overtime, loaning equipment out, doing all the things that we do.
We don't, we don't have a whole lot of overtime. You know, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, we try to do, we'll do most of it during the week and that type of thing, and, uh, we'll have some people come in on Saturday and clean up after the downtown concerts, but a lot of that, a lot of that is part-time help that's still under the forty-hour week, you know, the seasonal help and stuff, so.
There is, I was just saying, though, my point was going to be if you had to cut back, those are the types of things that.
Oh, well, yeah, sure, that does.
That's, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, those would be the first things to go. We wouldn't be, be able to help with as many community functions that we do.
It seems like we've got, um, consensus to, the budget that's been presented to us is to take it out of the sustainability core area, except for now the, the longevity, the, uh, nonprofits to go over.
Yes.
So, would you like to move into that area?
Well, does this budget reflect the commission's decision regarding longevity pay?
Pardon me?
Does this budget reflect the commission's decision?
Uh, Mr. Dawson?
Uh, Mr. Dawson?
Dawson?
Uh, Mr. Dawson?
Uh, we're talking, uh, talking now about the longevity, uh, pay and whether or not that is included in this draft.
It's, it's not included, like, it's not.
Was the amount about fifty thousand dollars? Yes, sir. Okay. For a one percent, oh, spread over a three-year period, I think it's fifty-five K, I think.
Yeah, fifty-five point three.
Yeah. It's not included. I would hope that we could absorb that money, you know, in the budget without going through and adjusting every department. If, if the commission desires to make that change.
Okay, well, just move into the, uh, look at the nonprofits. It was in, into Commissioner Hall, a strong feeling on this, uh, you know, it shows two thousand dollars less than what we had put in the total amount, two thousand less in the, the current year, uh, because of the, um, the push contribution. I had stated a couple of weeks ago that I would be in favor to, uh, keep that two thousand in there and add it to the Grand Theater. Some, maybe some discussion did or did not go along with that or what have you, so I will open any comments regarding the, um, all the different, uh, funding here. Mr. Turner?
It was my hope at the onset of working on this budget that we would be able to meet the request of the Grand Theater, um, as well as maybe meet the request of the Women's Shelter. But, you know, after this discussion today, I'm a little less hopeful that we'll, we would be able to do that.
The Women's Shelter of Simon House?
Pardon me?
Is it the Women's Shelter or the Simon House?
Um, Simon House did request an increase, but so did the Women's Shelter. So, but I don't, I don't know how, what the best way to get to that number is without upsetting, uh, the budget. Some of the things that we tried to look at, uh, was the Bluegrass Domestic Violence Program, did we get any more information on that?
I haven't, no.
I don't know where the rest of the commission stands, but I'd like to do our best to fulfill those requests. The, the Grand Theater does do a good, um, work for the community, um, and so does the Women's Shelter.
The Women's Shelter?
They requested an increase of two thousand.
Mayor, I think you're looking at.
I, I just hit the same thing.
I think you're looking at the same sheet I was looking at, Mayor, just a second ago, that it, it doesn't reflect on this one, but it's on this larger sheet.
Okay, I didn't see, okay.
You know, the fact is, I think if, if we're going to pull one point two million out of reserves, why not add an?
There's seventy-five hundred.
Another, yeah, seventy-five hundred.
I think that's exactly why, I mean, I think that is why. I mean, that's, I mean, my position the whole time has been that I'd be really happy to consider increasing these requests, uh, if we, you know, if we can find the money. But, I mean, borrow, you know, essentially borrowing money, I mean, which we, we might as well consider taking money out of reserve, you know, the same as borrowing money. But spending, you know, spending money we don't have to increase an agency's funding, I don't think is very responsible. I mean, I'd love to be able to, to help them, but we're about to go a million dollars in the hole, which I can't believe we're doing, but.
Can you, Commissioner Hayden, idea?
Well, I guess, uh, another idea would be to see if, with the increased occupational sales tax, um, if people would be look, I don't know where everyone stands on that, raising that quarter of a percent. I don't recall, I think. Because that would actually raise the budget. Do you follow me? That one point, one-two-eight proposal, which would decrease taking it out of the revenue.
Two weeks, the, I can, I can, I follow where we've been on the record on that. Two weeks ago, uh, the mayor and you were in favor of that.
Right. And I said.
And I, and I could be, and I could be in favor of that now with a two percent property tax decrease.
Right.
To balance that out, which would create a net gain this fiscal year of, uh, roughly one million sixty thousand dollars. And I prefer a four percent property tax decrease, which would be roughly just a net gain straight up of one million dollars.
So, still just keeping a two percent of property tax, is that what you said?
If we, if we were to decrease property taxes by four percent and increase occupational taxes by a quarter percent, I still think that would be an economic boost, because that would help any new businesses bottom line.
Right.
And it would just kind of spread the burden out a little more towards the folks who come in from out of town to work here, which I really think is only fair. And that's a hard call to make, but, uh, that ensures a sound. But that would be a, minus four percent on property taxes and plus quarter percent on occupational taxes is a, that would, uh, knock out a million dollars.
Commissioner May?
Mayor, I was going to point out, anytime that cities or local governments cut their property tax rate and goes backwards, if you put that on a graph, at some point, it's going to get, come back and give you a negative effect down the road, so you'll come back and have to try to catch up, which will never be possible economically, financially speaking. And then you have to end up raising other taxes to even higher level and just won't, it won't balance out, it'd be very, very bad for the future growth of the city to decrease property taxes.
I'm not in favor of dealing with property taxes right now.
Yeah, I was saying, I'm not in favor of increasing the occupational tax either.
I think this is too short a time, I, that is.
I understand, Mayor.
What, what's considered as?
I said, I understand, Mayor.
I, I would support a two percent decrease in property and, uh, increase in occupational.
Uh, Mr. Dawson, would you?
Good to get you mixed up.
You're making comments pertaining to this, about the property tax.
Do you have any calculation of what a two percent reduction in property tax would translate into loss? Well, for example, we're, we're bringing in about three million dollars a year property tax. So, a four percent, what, as Commissioner Wilder had mentioned, a four percent would take it down about a hundred twenty thousand dollars. Four percent of three is a hundred twenty thousand. In a half a year, I assume his calculation and what he's saying in half a year would, you know, four years, two point two million dollars for your, uh, increase for your, uh, occupational tax. A half year would be one point one million dollars. So, if you net the two together, you're looking at about a million dollar increase is, is the calculation I think he's, he's referring to.
That's right.
And we, we bring in about fifteen, fifteen million seven hundred thousand dollars a year in, uh, occupational tax right now. That's the state and the private sector. And, uh, taking it up fourteen percent from a one point, uh, uh, seven-five percent to a two percent would bring in about two point two million dollars a year. Half of that would be one point one. Is that sort of answer the question?
Commissioner May?
But could you just point out the long-term detriment if, if local governments cut their property tax rate based on House Bill forty-four restrictions and getting into all the technical problems?
Well, let me, yeah, let me, let me give you the information that I, that what I was told, because I did some research on this. I think Commissioner Wilder had asked me this, uh, about it, a couple of years ago, about the impact. And it asked me originally, I think, if we could, if we could actually reduce our property tax rates, which was obviously originally told we couldn't, but then I went back and further inquired, uh, and, and, and real, and found out that we could. We, it has been done before and, uh, it's not done frequently, but it has been done. And, uh, the comments that I was, uh, was getting back from, uh, like, for example, our, uh, bond advisor, uh, is that, uh, when you reduce your property tax, uh, rates, uh, if you ever need to raise them to get back to where you were, you know, it takes you longer because you're compounding on a smaller number. You know, that's one thing. One thing I know for sure, uh, my experience here at the city government the last six years is, is the frequent questions that I get asked from, and we talked about this earlier tonight, the bonding rating company that's asking questions for me, the, the frequent question they ask me is, how is your collections for property tax? And are your rates stable and is your, is your property value's growing? They look at that as an indicator of how strong the local economy is. And, you know, that's one thing that, that, that is ve, is very significant, our play in our, uh, in our bond rating. So, I don't know what impact it, it would have, I can't say for certain, but I just know that question comes up, you know, uh, frequently when they're looking at our, their bonding rating. They want to, you know, because they look at that as an indicator of the strength of the local economy. How is your property tax? Because that, as we've talked before, that's the most stable income line we have. You know, I've never seen that, that income, uh, that number deviate, uh, from year to year, but I see interest premium tax deviates, you know, it can deviate, you know, three to five percent plus or minus. Same thing with the occupational tax, you know, depending on, uh, employment levels. So, I see those numbers deviate. I don't see the, the property tax number deviate. So, that's the one stable number on our, on our financial statement. And we've talked about this before, I've, I've mentioned it before. I know I'm, I'm repeating the information I've given you before, but that's, that's what I see. That answer the question.
Well, I think it's just really simple math. Well, not simple math, but finance in economic terms. If, trying to, what you said about the compounding rate, if we reduce our base.
Right.
Then it will be, it will require a larger percentage increase to get back to where we were today, which we can never do.
If we ever get back.
If you, you'd never get back there, because financially, economically speaking, you'd never gain that back, because it's the interest rate loss, the, the risk that you have. So, you never recoup. And if we go backwards and try to come back, we can only, under House Bill forty-four restrictions, four percent of whatever the rate is. And it's going to be a lower percentage, I mean, it's going to be a lower number that you're going to add that four percent on. You can take four percent every year and never catch up to where we are now. And so, that's, you talk about having problems buying police cars and fire trucks and garbage trucks, we'll, we'll see that come back, come very quickly if we get to that point. And then you'll have to raise occupational taxes, which hit all the people who are out trying to make a living wage that don't not only live in Frankfurt, but that live in the county that work here, our employees are going to, you talk about taking a hit on them. Because you'll have to, you'll be back.
I just wanted to make a comment on the property tax issue for a second there. I, I think that the point of, of it count, compounding is a valid point, but when it's such a small percentage of your budget, I mean, you can assume, I mean, if you lose, say you lose fifty, a fifty thousand dollar drop, for example, then you can recoup that money pretty quickly through other avenues. So, you're talking about a hundred thousand dollar decrease in property taxes for a million dollar increase in the budget. So, if a bond company is going to look at us and say, what's the financial stability of the city of Frankfurt, if we're pulling one point two million dollars out of our reserve fund versus lowering the property taxes two percent, I think that they would go for lower the property tax for two percent. And, I, I mean, and certainly, I respectfully disagree with some of the other commissioners up here, but, you know, and we can also talk about this budget situation that we're in. What is the one, let's take the last five years, for example. What tax of all the taxes that we issue or, or put up has been increased? The property tax. And what has happened to the budget every year? It's gotten worse. So, is taking that four percent and that, what's the amount, the two hundred thousand or something like that?
Yeah, so it's about a hundred twenty.
Hundred twenty-five thousand. Taking that, by doing that, first off, you can make the argument that if you don't take the four percent every year, that you're losing out. And I, I don't know the record of my fellow commissioners here on who's voted for the four percent every year, but you can make the same argument if you ever voted for the compensating rate or a two percent or a one percent. Uh, and then secondly, we've raised the property tax rate and it hasn't fixed the problem. It's not a, um, a revenue source that's going to get us out of this mess. And part of it is because there's, the House bill has, uh, regulated what we can raise it by. But it's not the solution. So, sitting here and saying that we'll never recoup it, well, we're, it's not going to fix the problem anyway, even if we did recoup it. If we raised it four percent this year, what we're allowed, it's not going to make a dent into what the budget problems are. But if you can redistribute some of that tax burden, you might be able to, uh, to really, to make a dent in this and really fix it, uh, for the foreseeable future. That's, that's my piece on the property tax. Thank you, Mayor.
I think we've been off, maybe, look, what I was thinking we were just trying to do with the question. I think we've been off, maybe, what I was thinking we were just trying to do. I would like, if we could, to work on the, see what Phil about, had to come of nonprofits raising and lowering taxes right now. Let's just have a different discussion if you don't mind. Commissioner Wilder?
I think we agreed a couple of meetings ago that the nonprofit should be the last thing we discuss after, after sorting out the rest of the budget and knowing, because it's pretty hard to discuss the nonprofits without knowing where we stand, without knowing where the budget stands.
Okay.
And within that, that context, I guess I could suggest another compromise. I mean, but first of all, just to note, I mean, we're not talking about, I think we all understand, because we've discussed this so many times, I think we all understand the compounding nature of, of property taxes. And the commission traditionally does vote to raise property taxes 4%. But for, I mean, for the record, nobody's talking about lowering property taxes 2% in a vacuum. I mean, I think everybody understands that if we do that, that we would have to adjust another rate to, to make up for it, but that's what we're, that's, I mean, that's what we're, that's what we're talking about doing. I mean, I think it's kind of a, a false argument to say that if we do this, then we'll have to raise occupational taxes later. I mean, the suggestion on the table is that we do both at the same time. And that's how, that's how you make up the revenue, is with a different revenue stream. For what it's worth, there is a valid point to be made about remaining, you know, competitive. Obviously, I'd still have the position that lowering property taxes would, would only help make us more competitive in terms of development and in terms of new businesses. I mean, we're talking about making it that little bit cheaper to own and purchase property and start a business here. If we're better or worse, occupational taxes don't affect a business's bottom line. We could, and 2% property taxes are occupational rate, as we heard, is, is pretty in line with what other, with what other, other areas charge. We could go a little lower than that. We could just raise the occupational rate by 0.15% to 1.9, and that would be a little, that would give us a little bit of a competitive edge over all the places that do charge the full 2. That would net out to $600,000, and that would require us to, to take much less out of the reserves. Just as a, just to throw that, you know, to throw that out there. I mean, in a nutshell, every 5% is, or every fifth of a percent is about a quarter million. Like I said, I mean, I'm open to taking, to taking a little bit out of reserves. I mean, it's, it's a rainy day fund and it's clearly raining. It's been raining for a few years. But we could actually lower property taxes by a much greater percent than we would increase occupational taxes, and that could, could still help balance the budget.
If I may add?
Yes.
And we're talking about trends and revenue generated by different kinds of taxes. And I would remind you that the, looking at a six-year trend or seven-year trend for occupational tax with state government, we have lost about a million dollars over what we were six or seven years ago. So occupational tax is not a guaranteed revenue.
Fair point. Well, and to add to the city manager's comments, I would, could also argue that property taxes aren't a guaranteed revenue. If you look at some of the cities in Arizona or Florida who have seen property values plummet, that's not a stable revenue source either. So I think all of the tax base depends on how the economy's doing and how successful they are. And it's also important to note out, or to note that while the state government aspect of our property, or occupational tax has gone down, the private sector has increased over the last few years. So I think that's important to note, too.
I think one of the problems with, with the city's traditional reliance on property taxes is the fact that roughly 2/3 of the property in town doesn't pay taxes. I mean, that's the, state government's a blessing and a curse at the same time, and that's definitely one of the downsides to state government. It's probably we rely pretty heavily on, on property taxes, but over half the property doesn't even pay taxes. I mean, I don't, you know, I don't want to make any of these decisions personally. This hurts, and I, and I have to admit that hands down, the easiest thing to do is just to say that we'll take all this out of reserves. But that's, that's the problem, is that's been the easiest thing to do for the last few years. And lots of previous commissions have made that easy choice, time after time after time,
So I take it you two are in favor of increasing occupational tax with decreasing the property tax? Is that what I'm gathering?
Yeah, it would have to be with a corresponding decrease.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support it without a decrease.
All right, now, here's my next question. If that route is taken, we would keep working spouses on the health care coverage?
I mean, that still doesn't close the budget gap.
It doesn't close the budget gap, but.
No. I mean, I'm open to discussion. The point I've been making about the, about the spouse, about the spouse benefits is that that's something I wouldn't be willing to consider without also asking everybody else to, to pitch in as well. If we're asking everybody else to pitch in as well, then I, then I'm still inclined to make those changes to benefits. And even if we make the changes, even if we make both of those changes, then we still have a benefit package that's better than anybody else, and we still have tax rates that are, that are still lower than most of the, most of the places. I mean, it's a change from where we are now, but that still has us with better benefits and better taxes than, than most anybody else in the, in the region or even the state. I think that's a fair middle ground.
One thing I just thought about on property tax.
Yeah.
Right now, I've got a 4% increase in it from the last year, okay?
Yeah.
So are we talking about taking it back to where it was, it is this year, keeping it, freezing it? Are we talking about taking it down to where it was the year before last and taking it down? Because it would really be taking down 8%. See what I'm saying? Because I've got, in this budget, I've got a 4% rise.
The, the first one right through, involving a 2% decrease, was calculating a 6% swing. So don't take a 4% increase, take a 2% decrease.
Oh, okay.
So as in, we're at a certain level right now, take it down 2% instead of taking it up 4%. And that's what would net out to, if we did occupational tax at 2% and took a 2% swing.
About 190,000, basically.
Right.
190,000 swing for the property tax.
Right. Which would put the net at?
The 1.1 increase.
Yeah.
If we jumped it to, you know, the 2%, so you're talking about a 1.1.
In occupational.
My $900,000 net difference.
Right.
For next year. Next fiscal year. Because you wouldn't be able to put that in play until, you know, January, because you've got to give everybody time.
Well, yeah, no, the numbers I'm talking about are for this fiscal year.
Yeah, the fiscal, the coming fiscal year.
For this coming fiscal year.